Twenty-sixth meeting of Dublin City Council, and we'll have the pledge. Tim, do you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Canada's stand, on nation, on ground, in visible ability, justice, and honor.
Well, welcome, everybody. We have a couple proclamations and special recognition events here this evening. Susan Novak, the Dublin Corporate Resident Honorary Consul of Austria, could you come forward?
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Fine, thank you.
Glad to have you here this evening. Susan and her husband Kurt and their family have resided in the Dublin School District for twenty-six years.
Yes, that's right.
And they're natives of Austria. They moved to the U.S. in nineteen eighty-nine. Their three sons attended Dublin Kaufman High School. Suzanne is a broker and co-owner of Remax Twenty-four Seven, a real estate brokerage here in Dublin Historic District. This is also the office of the honorary consulate, as I understand it.
Yes, it is.
Suzanne has been a real estate entrepreneur since two thousand and three, a licensed agent since oh-seven, and opened her own brokerage in oh-twelve. Suzanne was appointed honorary consul by the President of Austria, Heinz Fischer, in November two thousand and fourteen. She's replacing Professor Friedl Bum, former CEO of architectural firm NBBJ, who held position for twenty years. And we do have an Austrian flag. It's posted in council chambers tonight in the honor of Austria and the new honorary consul.
Thank you.
I have this proclamation, which I'd like to read. Whereas Heinz Fischer, the President of the Republic of Austria, named Suzanne Novak, Dublin Corporate Resident, is honorary consul of Austria for the Columbus consulate, her installation ceremony was held on October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. I know there were a number of us in attendance there. Mary Lee was there, and I was there. Dana was there, so it was a very nice event. Whereas Suzanne Novak is a Dublin real estate brokerage owner with offices at one oh-six South High Street, she and her husband Kurt are Austrian natives who moved to the United States in nineteen sixty-nine. They have resided with their family in the Dublin area for the past twenty-six years. And whereas the honorary consul supports Austrian expatriates in visiting foreign nationals in matters such as obtaining passports and visas and in citizenship, marriage, and divorce issues, the honorary consul also assists U.S. residents when traveling to Austria. And whereas the honorary consul promotes cultural and educational exchanges between Ohio and Austria, and whereas the honorary consul opens the doors for Ohio businesses to expand to Austria and Austrian companies to locate operations in central Ohio, currently approximately thirty Austrian companies own subsidiaries here in Ohio. And whereas the city of Dublin is very pleased that the honorary consul of Austria for the Columbus consulate is located at her office in the city of Dublin. Now, therefore, I, Michael Keenan, Mayor of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate Dublin Corporate Resident Suzanne Novak for being named honorary consul of Austria for the Columbus consulate and recognize her for her commitment to serving the citizens of Austria and the United States. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for the recognition. I do appreciate it, and I look very much forward to fostering the relationships between Austria and Dublin citizens and businesses. And hopefully, we get a few to locate here, not just in the rest of Ohio. Thank you very much.
And I see we have also number-one Digital City Award, Roger Wright, Center for Digital Government. You're going to present this to... Okay. Peter's going to say a few words.
How are you doing? Thank you. Thank you.
You're supposed to present this to me.
I'm Roger Wright. I'm with Intel Corporation. I was asked to come here this evening to recognize Peter and Kyle Kreidler for placing first in last year's twenty-fourteen Digital Cities Survey. So this is a prestigious honor for you guys. I mean, it's number-one in the entire United States of all city governments with a population up to seventy-five thousand. So I wanted to take a few minutes to congratulate Peter and Kyle and Maria and Mayor Keenan. You know, thank you...
And the city council.
And the city council.
City manager. City attorney.
You know, you guys had an Austrian accent. This is a southern accent here, so just bear with me. The Center for Digital Government, based in Folsom, California, is a national research and advisory institute on information technology policies and best practices in state and local government. The center is a division of E Republic, a national publishing event and research company. Government Technology News, Governing and Public CIO are three of their best-known publications. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Center of Digital Government and Digital Communities, the center's local government program. We would like to extend our congratulations to you for your top-ten ranking in the twenty-fourteen Digital Cities Survey. You placed number-one, up from fifth place in two thousand and ten, so this is not just a one-time thing. This is a pattern of continued success. This national survey is in its fourteenth year. It recognizes the successful digital achievements of cities, which improve life for government, employees, citizens, and businesses. Top-ten cities provide the best examples of how information and communication technology are used to support and provide public service. A few of the things that the survey judges found impressive about the city of Dublin. The two goals that have been key to Dublin's success are providing employees with the technology that they need and providing their tech-savvy residents and corporate residents the information and online tools they want and expect from the city. Executive support from the city manager and city council has been a huge enabler. The city notes that they couldn't have been successful without that support. Dublin uses extensive social media and website community engagement tools and has made an excellent start on open data. Dublin's accomplishments include enterprise technology solutions, best-practice geographic information systems, dependable network infrastructure, and cloud applications and data storage. The IT help desk resolves eighty-seven percent of service requests within a single day. I don't even live here. I'm going to call into mall to test this. Thanks to collaborative processing, including a joint dispatch center with four jurisdictions, shared information and streamlined workflows, divisions and departments work together efficiently and effectively. One hundred percent of Dublin's server environment is virtualized, and the network uptime is around ninety-nine percent, which is also impressive. Overall, Dublin has an excellent balance of digital government initiatives composed of citizen engagement, effective and reliable infrastructure, and productivity tools. These are the initiatives of a true digital city. Thank you for the wonderful information technology services you are providing for your constituents. Congratulations on a job well done, and happy retirement, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
You want to say a few words, Peter?
Sure. Thank you. This recognition is really an honor. I really do appreciate it. The Buckeyes are number-one, and now you know that the city of Dublin's technology is number-one. Obviously, Urban Eye and I have a lot in common, so... I'm really accepting this on behalf of my staff. I have excellent IT staff. Reba and Zeddy, and Stand-up Maria, she's been a key person in my staff. Very committed, very professional, and also I'm accepting this on behalf of the social media staff in Community Relations, primarily Bruce Edwards and Justin Cusenbein. I think I pronounced that right. As you well know, or maybe you don't know, I'm retiring. This is my last week, so what a way to go out. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, and I did want to note that this is his last meeting after eighteen years of service to the city. We appreciate everything you've done on behalf of the city. Thank you very much. You might want to introduce your wife back there. Very good. That's always helpful. Thank you, Peter. We really appreciate it. Okay, and with that, we have a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and I think Angel Mumma. Okay, well, the city of Dublin, we're proud to announce that the two thousand and thirteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This award is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment for the city. This marks the twenty-fifth consecutive award the city's received since its first in nineteen eighty-nine. That is absolutely remarkable when you think about all the ins and outs that are going on in the finance department, the amount of money coming in, the amount of money going out, and to keep all that straight in the financial reports as they are so well-done. We appreciate it very much. So congratulations on the award, and I'll give you that.
Yes, I just want to recognize Jerry O'Brien, who is our chief accountant, and he has been with us since February of two thousand and fourteen, so not even a year, and his first CAFER with the city of Dublin, received that award. And then Robin Howard is our accountant, and she has been with us since two thousand and thirteen. So this team put together the two thousand and thirteen CAFER and did a great job, but really, this is not just a testament to the finance department. It's overall the city's financial operations, and that's everybody's responsibility, not just ours. So thank you to council for your support, and the city manager, of course.
I think it's also noteworthy that Marcia served as the Director of Finance for a lot of those twenty-five years that we received the reward. So thank you just to you and to the rest of your staff as well during those years, Marcia. Okay, with that, we have a special presentation tonight from Dublin Convention and Visitor Bureau, Mr. Dring, Executive Director. And that looks like Mr. Belfridge. Eric, how are you doing? Good to see you.
City Council, I'm Eric Belfridge, the President of the Dublin Convention and Visitor Bureau. Scott Dring is with me here. He's going to pass out our strategic plan. Our board's been busy the last quarter developing and completing our strategic plan, as well as our biannual audit. Our strategic plan reaffirmed our mission and vision statement, as well as developing six new key initiatives. Number-one is relevancy, to position the bureau as an economic development organization critical to the future success of Dublin. Number-two, brand marketing, to enrich and market Dublin's destination brand. Number-three, outdoor product, to define and prioritize Dublin's unique outdoor offerings. Number-four, the Dublin Experience, to grow an informed and enthusiastic tourism industry, enhancing Dublin's visitors' experience. Number-five, sports facilities, to collaborate with others to build athletic facilities, the city of Dublin. And number-six, our meetings market, to identify business travel segments to pursue. Our audit was approved by State Auditor Yost, and we do this audit every other year. A copy of the audit approval letter is in your package that you just received, along with our strategic plan. I'd like to introduce Scott Dring.
Thanks, Eric. Good evening, everyone. All's well. In your packet is our annual report, and I just want to kind of highlight a few things, not only from the bureau, but from the industry's perspective. It was a great year last year. Last year, we had a record number of more than two-point-six million visitors visit the city of Dublin. Our average daily rate, which in our hotels, the average dollar that someone spent was a hundred and four dollars, which was an all-time record high for the city of Dublin, up about five percent over the previous year. In terms of bed tax revenue, we increased four percent to a record amount of two-point-six-seven million dollars as well last year, another huge benchmark. And our occupancy rate for our hotels is just over sixty-six percent, and that's about seventeen percent over where we were back in two thousand and nine. So it was a banner year for our industry as well. From the bureau perspective, with all of your collaboration and help, last year was a huge year in terms of getting some huge international events, Top Gun Football Camp, the U.S.-Australian Rules Football Championships, and many others that aren't quite as visible. We're here in the city of Dublin last year. Our website visitors were up twenty-three percent. Our blog visits up a hundred and twenty-six percent. A couple other little highlights in the annual report, the bureau received the top social media campaign of the year last year with the President's Cup, with all your help on that as well. The Irish Experience Program that we started with your help a couple of years ago. Last year, we created sixty-two new Irish experiences throughout the year. Again, with our goal, trying to make this a unique destination for visitors to come visit, spend money, stay in our hotels. As Eric mentioned, we're very excited about our strategic plan that has really kind of laid out a roadmap for the last three to five years. I can tell you, it was not really done in a vacuum. It was a plan that we worked on for six months or so. We interviewed visitors, stakeholders. We even looked at your goals and aligned our strategic initiatives with your city council goals as well. So it really had the city as a whole perspective in terms of the visitor experience down the road. Well, we're all excited here tonight to announce that the Top Gun, the football university Top Gun camp, has again selected Dublin, Ohio, to be at site for two thousand and fifteen. It's unprecedented. It's the third year in a row they've selected Dublin. They've never done it more than two years, any other place in the country. Josh Beck here, face it, he did all the work. I'm just announcing it. So with your help, it's really truly a unique collaboration between the bureau, the city of Dublin, Dr. Holy, Dublin City Schools, Nationwide Children's Hospital, Sports Medicine. With all those pieces and parts, there's no way we could have got that event here in the city of Dublin. So we're excited to do that. Again, it's a huge event. Last year, it attracted visitors from every state in five countries around the world, economic impact of three-point-nine million dollars to our city during that week in July, and again, will be held, Dublin General High School. So again, thank you for all your support and assistance in landing that. One other quick thing, a new campaign that I thought you guys might be interested in, when it has to do with the residents, we're actually creating a new campaign called Live Like a Local, video campaign. What we're doing is we're going to reach out to local residents and have them tell us their favorite spots across the city of Dublin, get little thirty-to-forty-five-second splurts of it in video, and then promote those to visitors. Because let's face it, visitors want to go where locals go. They don't want to go to your typical things that they read in our visitor's guide. They want to find away, hide away little secret places. So we're going to be working with residents and doing that as well. And finally, if I may, Mayor, I'd like to thank Marcia for her knowledge, innovation, experience over the last twenty-five years with the bureau. The bureau's a better place because you've been assisting us over the years, not only bureau, but the tourism industry as a whole. So we appreciate your help. On a personal note, you know, we've been here almost fifteen years, and there's no other place than now. We'd rather raise our family right here in Dublin. I think it's a lot because of what you've done here in the last twenty-five years. So thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks for those kind words, too, and we must be number-two or three behind Columbus in revenues collected in terms of bed tax revenues? Number... By a long shot. We appreciate your hard work on that. Thank you. It helps support a lot of the community events.
I just wanted to say congratulations on the Top Gun. I had the opportunity to volunteer last year at it, talked to a lot of parents that came with their children. They make it a family vacation. The grandparents were there, all the siblings were there. And how this works, which I didn't know until I was talking to the parents, that kids, their football coach submits a video of them to the NFL players. Right. And they make the decision as to which kids get selected to come. And so it's quite an honor for them, and there's a middle school week and then a high school week, so they're not, you know, the big kids with the little kids kind of thing. But so it's really, you know, the parents are so excited and the grandparents for their children to be selected and to come. And they spoke highly of being here in Dublin and the activities, the zoo, and all the things that are close by, since they do bring their family. And they're here for four or five days at each session, right? Yeah, so congratulations to all of you. It's really a great opportunity for this community.
Amy? Anybody else? All right, well, thank you. Again, we've got a lot of good things going on in Dublin. This is evidenced by just the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations tonight. This is a area of meeting for citizen comments, and I see Mr. Mauer has signed up. Mr. Mauer, would you like to come forward?
Your Honor and members of council and members of city management, if you looked on the page there where I signed up to see what my subject is, you probably will find the word symptoms.
I see that.
S-Y-M-P-T, something like that. A very fascinating subject. During the months I haven't been here, all I've learned about the city has come from the local papers, the very local papers. And the topic apparently, which got the biggest splash, was the one in which the several members of the zoning and planning commission resigned. And correct me if I'm wrong, this seemed to me to be a symptom of something we talked about, or at least I talked about the last time, way back when I was here, and that is, I was stunned by the piece of legislation at that time, which spelled out in very, very particular detail, exceedingly particular detail, of the, for the checking out of the Great Bridge Street Corridor Plan, right down to every cubic inch. And it seemed to me to do that would involve a fantastically large bureaucracy, as large as the city probably. And it was no surprise, if I'm right about what I interpreted in the newspaper, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the city, I mean, the city council and the commission, both very concerned about observing and surveilling the development wherever it occurred. We're at some loggerheads about that, and this council, of course, I'm sure every so often draws a deep breath when it realizes the big venture it has taken on for this city. And I think that the reports were right, that the group which should check on the development should be a combination of the city and the members of the commission. It occurred to me, maybe there should be a third member on that kind of a group. There's no doubt in my mind that this city is going to be, eventually, one of the great cities, and not indulging too much hyperbole, one of the great cities in the world. And it should have, I think, a third member on that group. This is my suggestion. Need somebody, I think, with a kind of historical, artistic-cultural perspective, which we all to a certain degree have, and it occurred to me that maybe a third person on that checking committee should be somebody from the Dublin Arts Council, who have along, either the director or somebody whom he might name, who have a long range of observation about the development of cultures in great societies. And I think it might be, for what it's worth, useful to have a third member of that kind on the committee. Well, my time's about out, so I'll, in my first appearance here, grant you a free four or five seconds.
As always, we appreciate your input, Mr. Mauer. Thank you. I see we have an Eric Kraus. If you'd come forward, please, and name and address. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Eric Kraus, and I live at eight-six-zero-six Kirkhill Court. I want this council to know that I agree with the goals of the Bridge Street Project and the reasons for undertaking the project. It's a big investment for Dublin in order to find the character and future of Dublin. That's why it's crucial to make sure it is done well. The current plans have significant shortcomings that will prevent the core of Dublin from ever reaching its goals and potential unless changes are made to those plans. I can show this council in a one-hour presentation what the critical shortcomings are and why they will clearly prevent the core of Dublin from reaching those goals and potential. I can also show you what the proven solutions are with many examples. For the benefit and future of Dublin, its residents, and all businesses, it's important that council allow me to make that presentation directly to council members. Due to the importance of the project, I would hope to make that presentation to the whole council, but if that is not possible, I would request a minimum of three or four council members attend the presentation. I love Dublin and want the core of Dublin to be a success for all of its residents throughout Dublin and businesses. This council has a responsibility to its residents to thoughtfully hear and consider how to make that happen. I look forward to your response and thank you for your time. I do have a page that will give you a little bit more information than what I've just said here as to my recommendation request.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
May I ask you a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Kraus, what is your area of expertise?
Go to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, yeah, you have to...
My background is in retail. I was in retail for thirty years. Prior to that, I lived in Egypt, did some work there for Smithsonian and some museums. These days, I do consulting as far as for troubleshooting and mostly building inspections, things of that nature. I've spent about four to five years of my adult life traveling in other cities and other states and other countries, and take a lot of time when I do so to study what makes some great and how that might apply to Dublin and what makes others less so. I follow that up with the research about the architects, current plans, what's happening, what's working, why changes have to be made. So I've collected a lot of information that I know that you'd find useful and helpful in this.
Probably most appropriate for you to share your ideas with staff. We can't get together with more than four, with more than three, rather, without creating a quorum and sunshine rule.
Oh, I tried doing that, and Councilman Reiner initially, about a year ago, I was in town, apparently in October two thousand and thirteen, there was some type of public forum with the consultants. I was in New York for that week and could not attend. Early last year, I contacted Councilman Reiner to ask, well, how do I convey some of this information? He suggested I contact MKSK Consultants. I forget the name, Darren Meyer, I believe it was, down there directly. After two and a half weeks, I left three phone calls, three messages, asking return call, and also four other phone calls, and I'm not receiving a response. I decided that was not going to work, plus he was also the architect, his car's in a plan. The point to answer to your question now directly is that, over the course of last year, I did present portions of these solutions and problems to various staff members, but it was still a very car-centered response. But the bottom line was that they said that the current direction of the plan is of the direction of council. It would take council to make changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Hi there. Excuse me. Kevin Walter, sixty-two eighty-nine, Ross Bend. As I've worked in a variety of venues to educate and inform people of issues of concern to me, I've tried to be factual and accurate in providing information. It's important to me that I'm a credible source of information attempting to elicit thoughtful and reasonable discussions surrounding those issues. I have heard council express concern at times about misinformation. I have heard that word used several times by this body and used in city publications. I understand the concern of trying to manage the message and ensuring that misinformation is kept to a minimum. So I must come again before you, this body, to correct some misinformation. During the double city council meeting on January twentieth, I made some opening comments that raised the specter of misinformation. Speaking with respect to the vision for the Bridge Street District, I said, quote, "To date, you've invested tens of millions of taxpayers' dollars, issued and sold millions of dollars in bonds, created a TIF agreement with the Dublin City Schools, established development agreements, and committed hundreds of millions of private investments to that vision," end quote. At the conclusion of my comments, several members of council questioned the fact that bonds had been issued for Bridge Street District projects. Council members mentioned that they could not recall issuing any bonds, did not know of the existence of any bonds, and was concerned that the information I was providing was, quote, "simply inaccurate," end quote. I'm here tonight to connect, correct that. You are correct. Misinformation continues to abound. I will attempt to set the record straight. I believe that my integrity was called into question, and it's important that the people of Dublin take my word as truth and that I can back up my claims. For the record, on November eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, this body passed ordinance eighty-nine thirteen. It passed unanimously with a six-to-zero vote in the affirmative. I'll read the opening sentence of the resolution. Ordinance eighty-nine thirteen, quote, "An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of five-point-seven million dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the city's vehicular transportation system, including within and serving the Bridge Street District."
You know, I have to correct you, at least interject, that particular project was Riverside Drive roundabout that was planned well before any of the Bridge Street stuff had been put in place. So this bond issue has nothing to do with Bridge Street. I'm sorry. It has everything to do with the roadway.
I'm just quoting from the ordinance, which says...
Well, I just, again... Well, I just, again...
The "city's vehicular transportation system, including within and serving the Bridge Street district," end quote. I simply wanted to come before you tonight to put to rest the misinformation and categorically state that this body did, in fact, issue bonds in support of the Bridge Street district in the amount of $5.7 million. These bonds encumber future taxpayers on the hope of payback from the district. This $5.7 million is on top of the actual current outlays in excess of $30 million for consulting fees and land acquisition in the district. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Amrose.
Can Marcia, as our city manager and former finance director, perhaps...
Yeah, it'd be nice to clarify a little bit. Some of this is a matter of semantics and it's aggravating, but...
Yeah, as the mayor mentioned, the relocation of Riverside Drive and the improvements to the intersection at Riverside and State Route 161 were reviewed initially starting back in 2005 and 2007, and has been included in the city CIP for quite some time for the improvement. Part of the discussion is that, yes, it will serve the Bridge Street district, but it also serves the, the overall Dublin community. And the big, the key component, when we started looking at the intersection and the, the improvements and where they would go, a lot of it needed to be coordinated with the existing infrastructure, which the biggest component there was the existing Sciota River Bridge, to make sure that we understood the impacts of that and that we didn't do anything that caused us to have to rebuild or expand that bridge. But it did need to be coordinated with what we knew was going on in the Bridge Street district. So the, the bonds that were issued were for the land acquisition related to those two projects. And again, they are projects that were on the, the city's books for years and were, would have been completed with or without Bridge Street. It's just a matter of coordinating it, the improvement with the, the private improvements that were being proposed currently for Bridge Street.
Yeah, it's kind of noteworthy, regardless of Bridge Street, we, we very likely would have moved the road to the east in any event, because this was council's goal for many years, to open up the Sciota River. We've been acquiring ground along the Sciota River and, and properties for, I don't know, 10, 15 years, Marcia?
Probably longer than that, yes.
It's an incredible piece of property. The movement of Riverside to open up the park and open up the river as an amenity for the city was extremely important and a goal to this council, so...
Yeah, and it was a, a goal with city council many years ago. And if you look at some of the properties that were acquired, there were two properties just south of 270 that were acquired on the west side of the river, at least 10, 12 years ago. And then there were two properties just north of State Route 161 that were acquired probably in about the same timeframe, with the idea, as you mentioned, to acquire any lands that we could along the river to incorporate that in our, in our parks that we currently have. And so, part of the opportunities that came along with Bridge Street was that we had willing owners to sell land that we had acquired along the Sciota River.
And this is really consistent, even much further north, that policy of acquiring as much ground as we can as it becomes available along the riverfront up north. By, was it Wedgewood, in that part of the world? There's properties up in there that we've picked up.
Yeah, and we've acquired property along, as part of Amberly, the DAC facility. Part of that reason was the access to the river. So, yeah, there's, all along the Sciota River, the city has acquired land throughout the years.
And we've been blessed as a community to have the resources to do just that. I challenge everybody to find another city our size with the kind of park land available that we have.
Or the financial rating.
Or the financial rating, exactly right. So with that, Ms. Amrose, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Amrose. Grooms, I live at 5896 Leven links Court. My first official job was 29 years ago. It was not a very glorious one. I was 14 years old, and the job was to water flowers and pull weeds. So in the mornings, I would ride my moped down Bright Road, south on Riverside Drive, across the bridge through Old Dublin, left on France Road and onto Metro Place. I would park next to the new dumpster enclosure that housed all the tools I needed to complete the task at which I had been assigned. They consisted of a hose, water key, and hand weeders, all neatly tucked next to a trash container. It was a summer job, and as I remember, that summer was a particularly warm one, or at least it seemed so to me. So as I drug my hose from building to building across the parking lots of all the 22 locations on the property where annual flowers were planted, after a morning of watering, I would spend the afternoons weeding, keeping plant beds in the four ponds on the site spotless. I did this three days a week. I recall on some particularly hot days to question the decision that I had made accepting this job. Certainly, there had to be easier jobs, maybe inside, or some maybe with other kids. I was reminded of this job when I was before you last week to address you on your recent basic plan review. For an hour and 50 minutes, you heard from staff and the applicant about how wonderful this particular project was, praised you for your vision, and how you really needed to have this in your community. Then it was time for public comment. What was to follow was 29 minutes of the most painful time of your evening. It was evident by your willingness to stop residents in mid-sentence because their five-minute time limit was up, and you could hardly wait for them to stop. It was clear you did not want this job, at least not the public comment. You should not take a job you do not want to perform, and that is what I want to talk about tonight. There are many facets of the regretful decision council made to take the job of the Planning and Zoning Commission in ordinance 114-14. Planning and zoning is, is at its core a body that takes pride and pleasure when looking at applications for development within the city. It determines if it is in the best interest of the community from many different angles, including its impact on the existing residents. They look at traffic, density, architecture, landscape, and the overall integration in which the proposal fits into the community that surrounds it. Most importantly, they take pleasure in hearing from residents that share their passion for this great community. It is their common thread. I served as chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for nearly six years. I sat in meetings with my fellow commissioners and listened to residents share their passion for their community on birthdays, children's birthdays, anniversaries, and many other significant life day events. It was an honor and a pleasure. The one major exclusion that planning and zoning is completely left blind to is economics. That is by design. A project should have to stand on its own merits in every other category to earn a spot in our city. Then, and only then, if you, city council, feel it is advantageous enough to subsidize or incentivize for the greater good should an economic development agreement be penned. That decision is yours and yours alone. Your new desire to work this process in the opposite direction does not serve in the best interest of our community and will undoubtedly compromise the outcome and the benefit to the residents of Dublin. The end of my story is very different from the one I witnessed here last Tuesday night. I knew I was an outdoor kid, and each week the flowers were bigger and more beautiful than the week before. They continually benefited from my efforts. That made it very rewarding, and I knew my time was well spent. By contrast, I watched as you approved with reservation and angst a project that was merely enticing you out of fear of economic failure. You passed the project along to P&amp;Z to continue to review, with the one major criteria for that review, the requirement to look substantially like the drawing you sent them. Public comment and the commission's ability to significantly impact a project has been handicapped at best. You have already written $30 million in checks in this Bridge Street district development area. The taxpayers of this city have produced $1.5 billion of payroll to provide you with those funds. They deserve better in return. At least, they should have a seat at the table of significant discussion. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Herring, if you'd come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Scott Herring. I live at 3280 Lilly Mar Court. Like Mr. Walter, I was at the special meeting held here on Tuesday night, and at the end of the public comment section, I heard the call of, "Does anyone remember bonds in the Bridge Street district?" And I regret that I didn't raise my hand because I thought, boy, I'm pretty sure I was at that meeting. Using the open data, if I can call it that, that was referred to earlier, we have a great city website, and I did a quick search, Bridge Street, bonds, and there it was, and as Mr. Walter just cited, the November 2013. Because I remember, I came to council and I asked some questions about that project. And what I recall, I was told, "Mr. Herring, thank you for your comments, but yes, this was just, that ordinance was just a mechanism of financing that the properties had already been purchased." But as I recall, in that same session, there was bonds for some other properties, and then this called the transportation portion. My whole point on this is, having sat in the audience last week, when I heard the question, "Does anyone remember bonds for Bridge Street?", I thought, yes, the answer is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we clarified that earlier. We also have Amy, I'm sorry, I can't read this. Thank you very much. If you'd come forward, state your name and address.
Amy Tiedelman, 33, North Third Street in Columbus. Good evening, Mayor Keenan, councilors. My name is Amy Tiedelman. I'm also here to talk about Bridge Street, but something a little bit more specific and a bit different angle, so bear with me. I'm with SEIU Local One. We've been before you in November before. We represent janitors and security officers here in Columbus, in the Columbus area, including Dublin. Our members are mothers, fathers, they're taxpayers, and they work hard and they contribute to our local economy. I'm here to make a simple request. I think, and I think you do too, that corporations who benefit from our tax dollars should be held accountable to taxpayers. That's all of us. We know that you share a commitment to economic development that benefits everyone in communities like Dublin, where many of our members and their families live and also work. Businesses, business here in central Ohio is on the upswing, but despite the growth that corporate Columbus is enjoying, these corporations are not rewarding hard work with decent pay in many cases. In fact, it's the opposite. They are keeping wages down for their own gain, and it's hurting all of us. It's actually slowing our economy and making it harder for regular moms and dads to put food on that table. The Casto Real Estate Company is a prime example of this. I'm sure we've all heard of Casto. Casto is one of the largest retail property owners in the country, and it has more than $41 million in commercial real estate just here in central Ohio. And this success would ma, was made possible in part by taxpayers. Casto's projects have received millions of dollars in state and local subsidies. But instead of making our economy stronger by supporting good jobs, Casto is driving down standards by doing business with irresponsible contractors who pay dismal wages. One of these contractors is called C&amp;T Office Maintenance. It pays janitors as little as $9,000 a year. Can any of us survive on that? I'm sure all your salaries are public. Mine is. I couldn't. Could you? Would you like to survive on $9,000 a year? Probably not. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a wild stab and say not. I wouldn't want to. So, part-time and low-wage jobs like this are why the poverty rate in Columbus has doubled over the past decade. And what does that have to do with Dublin? Dublin is, it's beautiful. It's growing. Your schools are like nine out of 10. You, you're getting awards for things that didn't exist a decade ago, right? That's fabulous. So let's put some more plaques on the wall, right? You have the chance. You're the leaders of this city, and you have what it takes. You can take the lead in ensuring that corporations benefiting from public tax dollars, our tax dollars, are acting responsibly towards everybody and giving back to the community. We urge you to require, as a condition of any project approval, that Casto be committed to hiring responsible companies that provide quality jobs to all of their employees. And I should say, I'm speaking specifically of the Tuller Flats project, which is a 400-person residential development in the Bridge Street district, which is something that's obviously on everyone's mind tonight. We, so again, we urge you to require, as a condition of any new development in Dublin, and particularly with this project, that Casto be committed to hiring responsible companies that provide quality jobs. We welcome any questions you might have, and we look forward to discussing this matter with you further. We also, my colleague Claire Pollard will be following up with all of you by email, so we can get you some materials in writing, some stats, answer any questions you have about this. But again, we respectfully request that, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Does any council member have any item they'd like to remove from the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the actions for the 11 items that are listed on the consent agenda?
Some of...
Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? I'm sorry, Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zurker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson and Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Thank you. And second reading, ordinance 2-15.
Amending section two, Wage and Salary Structure Administration of Ordinance Number 7306, Compensation Plan for Non-Union Personnel.
Mr. Wagner?
Council members before you, for your consideration this evening as an ordinance to amend the compensation plan, there are four different areas in this proposal. The first two areas really are relatively straightforward in that it's incorporating three new positions and also modifying the pay ranges of two other classifications that were approved in the 2015 operating budget. The other two issues require a little bit more explanation. Council may recall, in 2007, the city updated and brought forward a new compensation and salary system. In that system, its goal was to be a preferred employer, as well as to attract and retain quality staff. Part of that was, in that requirement, was a promise to review salaries every two years. In doing that, the previous survey was done November of 2014. Those recommendations are before you this evening for your review. Also, in regard to the salary compensation system that was implemented in 2007, there was, in implementing that new system, it had some adverse impact on current employees that were long-term for the city, and therefore, the city made the decision to grandfather a system in there until such time as the new system either surpassed those pay ranges or those employees left the city. Those criteria have been met, and so our recommendations are to delete that grandfather clause. It's no longer needed, and I'll be glad to try and answer any of your questions.
Thank you. We've had a chance to read all the material. We appreciate the professional way it was put together. Council questions? Anybody? We have public testimony on this. Mr. Mauer, I see you've signed up for ordinance 2-15.
On the memo, page one, under Background, paragraph two, lines three and four, quote, "The city's compensation consultant with the assistance of HR staff." Now, the compensation consultant is obviously an outsider, right?
Correct.
Now, I, who is, what is meant by the HR staff?
It's our human resources.
What?
Human resources, folks.
Oh, okay. Now, on page, this comes after the printing of the legislation that you, that's up for a vote, right after. There's a second page of exhibit, there are two pages of Exhibit A, they are numbered.
Correct.
On the second page, under Law Enforcement slash Emergency Management, under Communications Manager, which is in red type, you see that? A police lieutenant has a slightly, a police lieutenant is listed there as being on that commission, on that board, and he has a slightly higher pay scale raised than the chief of police. And that caught my attention. It's just a slightly higher rate, and I wonder whether the governing principle in that section is, relates to some very intensive definition and, and definition of the commission, and that the police lieutenant who is there is necessary for the, for all that information.
We'll let us hear from the director here.
It's, actually, the point, the decimal point is in reverse order, so...
Correct.
3.1 is a higher pay range than 3.2.
Oh, okay, got it. Right, sorry.
No, no worries. Thank you. Is that all?
That's it. Okay.
Council, any further discussion? Anne?
Ms. Genisi Zurker?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Ordinance 3-15.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.062 acre, more or less permanent easement, 0.043 acre, more or less temporary easement... a 0.062 acre, more or less permanent easement, 0.043 acre, more or less temporary easement from Sabre L. Minyard and William Minyard for the property located at 8698 Highland Croix Road for construction of a shared use path connection.
Ms. Grigsby?
Yeah, the title pretty much states what this is about, the Minyard property on Highland Croix. We're in the process of looking to complete the connection on the Highland Croix bike path, and this is one of six properties that we are in conversation with, and I believe you've already passed legislation to acquire one of the other ones. And if you have any questions or would like any exhibit, Paul would have that, and it was agreed to at the appraised value, and we're asking for adoption this evening.
And this is one of many with respect to shared use path across the entire cities.
That's correct.
Okay, council, questions? Anne?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zurker?
Yes.
Ordinance four dash fifteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a development and real estate exchange agreement and the necessary conveyance documentation to acquire 1.20 acres, more or less fee simple interest from the Central Ohio Transit Authority, located adjacent to and north of Dale Drive in exchange for 3.326 acres, more or less fee simple interest owned by the city located east of Emerald Parkway, north of Bright Road for replacement of a Cota park and ride.
Thank you. Ms. Bogner?
Actually, I'll go ahead and address, and if you have any questions, and Terry will address those.
Very good.
At the last council meeting, Terry provided a detailed update on the background of this ordinance and the fact that the city is looking to acquire the site for the relocation of the existing Cota park and ride that's on Dale Drive, and we're looking at the site that the city owns on, on Bright Road, and we've been in conversations with Cota over the last several months. One of the things when we looked at the timeframe for setting up the legislation, there are some restrictions or limitations that we have with regard to some expirations of code that expires at the end of March that relates to new, new community authorities, which requires that you need to be either the owner or in contract to own the property in order for parcels to be included in the new community authority. And the change in legislation occurs at the end of March, March 22nd. So when we were looking at timeframes and the scheduling of this legislation, we came to terms with Cota on the basic agreements probably in late November, early December. And at that time, we set up a schedule looking at having staff prepare the application for P and Z in December with a hearing at P and Z on January 22nd. So we had the first reading last council meeting, January 5th, and then the second reading was scheduled for tonight, which would have been after the originally fought timeframe with hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission. With some of the recent changes that have occurred, the hearing for, in front of P and Z on the rezoning and the conditional use has been delayed until the, the meeting in February, which I believe is February 5th.
I believe that's right.
So, at tonight, what, what we would do is ask council, we could go ahead and postpone the hearing of this legislation this evening, and then have it scheduled for February 9th, which would be after the hearing or review by Planning and Zoning Commission. But at that time, we would ask that it be passed by emergency legislation in order to meet the requirements of the establishment of the new community authority, which we currently anticipate to be before council on March 9th.
Very good.
And if that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I know that we talked about this at our agenda meeting, and I know Mr. Peterson in particular had some issues with this, as, as most of council did as well in terms of timing. As you presented, it was a timing issue with respect to the community authority. But I think, I think since we have so many people here, we're, we're gonna take the public input. Council will have some questions first, perhaps, but we'll have the public testimony, and then we'll go from there in terms of the action that we're gonna take on it. Council will decide. So, council, do you have any other questions, anything anybody wants to bring up with staff or questions you wanna raise before we go to the public testimony? Nobody? Okay, with that, we have a pretty good list here. I see Mr. Roth has signed up. You wanna come forward, state your name and address?
Maybe, Mike, if I could just ask while he's making his way up here. If we in fact table this and it, and it goes to the next P and Z meeting, everyone that's here will have the opportunity to comment now that we're gonna listen to. They will also have the opportunity to participate in the planning and zoning process before it would come back before, before the agreement will come back before us.
That's correct.
So if you get up and talk tonight, you're not sort of waiving your right to speak at the P and Z, it's multiple process, multiple opportunities.
That's correct.
But, excuse me, if I'm, if I'm correct, they'll have a third opportunity to comment in February at our second reading, right?
One thing we would ask, we've got a lot of speakers tonight earlier and now, that you try not to repeat yourselves in terms of, of your points that you're trying to make to council.
That's why everybody volunteered me to go first, Mike.
Okay.
I'm Randy Roth, 6987 Granny Cliffs Drive, and I'm the president of the East Dublin Civic Association. And really, I sent you the memo, and you've been very kind. People have gotten back to me, you've read it, and that really is, and thank you for your time last, last meeting. I think we're really, a lot of us on the same page here. No matter what you decide on this, I think we really do need a transit, transit solution for the area around perimeter and the area around Bridge Street and a circulator system. And I really appreciate your support, and Merrily, your comments, and Rick. So whatever we do, and I talked to Dana this morning, and he's really committed to doing that, so we're gonna, we're gonna really try and work with you on that, whatever happens here. We do still think, though, that, that this park and ride would be a very important part of that. I think it'd be better down there. And of course, the staff says, right in the Bridge District Questions on Traffic, as we pointed out, the, the park and ride, any relocation of this facility should minimize service disruptions and should remain in close proximity to the existing park and ride. That makes sense, that we do double duty with this. And that's why we always assumed that that was where it was gonna go. So again, you know, we've talked about that. Secondly, you know, we, you defeated a proposal like this, as did the City Council of Columbus, because we all told them, we really, we didn't, it wasn't hostility to Cota. We said, we need a decentralized solution. Bringing the traffic south of Hard Road across Sawmill Road was a mistake. That's why they're at, at Smoky Road. That's why we wanted them to pick up the Powell, traffic in Powell, the Hard, the Smoky Road traffic, Columbus over there, and protect our roads. Because we do know, and I'm speaking again as someone who has been on the transportation task force and committees, we know it's seven lanes, which is all we can do on Sawmill, it's gonna blow out at, at build-out. It just cannot hold this kind of traffic. And so we need to find ways to get people away from this, and people away from our collectors. So that's something we're concerned about. And, and so, you know, we'd like a decentralized solution. Things that we've already seen, because we live here. I came home, I usually work seven to four. I came home 4:30 a couple, two weeks ago, and just like we had been talking about, I know Merrily and I've talked about this, Greg and I, the, the turn lane on Bright Road to come over, the, on Sawmill to come over to Bright, it backed up so far, we went through two cycles of lights, and the cars stuck out in the other lane and blocked a whole lane of Sawmill. And that's with Verizon empty and not a square foot of commercial in this area. When I came by later, I had a later meeting, came by 5:30 last week, we were stopped for an entire half-minute at the, at the roundabout trying to get into it, because when that slew of traffic came up from Cardinal, it was double lane, we could not move, we had a line of eight cars there. And again, that's with no office on it. And so we're talking about, with this parking ride, we're talking about a stream of cars at, at rush hour that goes for a mile. It's a mile-long stream of traffic. So this is a concern. But our greatest concern here tonight is, what are we gonna do with the community plan if we build there? The thing is, this was the community plan that we worked on so hard, and the staff changed this without our knowledge. In other words, we talked, Dana and I figured this out today on the phone. This is the community, the community's plan, but it's, and I got this off the website this year. We decided, we originally had a plan when we worked this out with the developers and the landowners and everybody, we, we had lots of meetings. And we decided that instead of putting the extension of Inverness, I know we're all committed to rebuilding our neighborhood, instead of putting it south of the road, we decided to put it in a beautiful wooded area. The reasons were affordability. The reasons were that Mr. McKittrick, the major owner down south, did not want to go with the residential. And we know that we need, this is mirror image to Coventry Woods, if you remember, on the other side. Remember, Mike, when we came out and supported you when we extended Coventry Woods to the south? And the point was, is you can't develop Emerald Parkway all as office. It will choke. And we, the staff backed us up on that when we, when we had that. And it's the same thing here, we're gonna need some single-family homes here, some owner-occupation homes, to have the roads work both ways at rush hour. And this is our best chance for it up here. So what we're asking you is, please, you know, we can help you with this. The staff has stranded two residents at the end of this street. Whenever you've worked with us, when we came with the idea of Cryer Drive going all the way through, when we came to the idea of you of putting Shamrock through, we worked together, we got the residents out, and we opened up traffic that really worked. And so, you know, we bleed Dublin green. We love this city, we wanna work with you. And the thing is, the staff has not been paying attention to us at all. We, I'm not only blindsided by this, we're blindsided by a change in our community plan of a plan that we really worked hard on, put in thousands of hours collectively, and they didn't even think about our thoughts. Wow, I made it in time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody? Okay. We have Don Spangler, if you'd like to come forward.
I, I'm Don Spangler. I live at 3614 Genmar Court, and basically, I would agree with about everything that Randy said. Our goal as residents is to find some solution to traffic, and part of it would be public transportation. The only thing I would add to this, if we look at what Dublin City Council does, usually you consider and focus on business, entertainment opportunities, parks and recreational facilities that benefit and protect the majority of Dublin residents. In just my opinion, the current park and ride situation is that if it doesn't work where it is now, if we have to move it, if it doesn't have value to be near Bridge Street where you're bringing in all of these people, all these residences, maybe we don't even need Park and Ride in Dublin. If it can't stand on its own right there, if you're gonna bring in 800 single-family residences or single residences and you can't support it, you don't have room for it, maybe it's not of value to us. It takes up space, it doesn't produce revenue. What is it good for? If, right now, the Cota representative set his buses, I believe his number was close to 40 on some of the buses, but not on a regular basis. Is it worth what it costs to maintain a park and ride in Dublin for that number of people? Could we do the same thing? Could Cota do the same thing in Columbus? In any event, basically, I'm with Randy, we do need to work on our transportation system. If Park and Ride can't sustain itself where it is on another piece of property down there, maybe we really don't need it. End of story. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And council? We have Martin, I believe it's Martin Marshall?
Merlin Marshall?
I'm sorry, I was having trouble reading the writing here. Welcome.
Merlin Marshall, 3996 Summit View Road. I live off of Sawmill in the area that is being impacted by the proposed placement of the Park and Ride on Bright Road. You who live on the west side of Dublin have no idea what the traffic is like on Sawmill currently, in the morning and evening rush hours, and on the weekends when people are going to and from, shopping, going to the zoo, whatever. The situation is equally bad over on Riverside, people going to and from work, the traffic there moves along at a crawl, and a trip that can normally take 20 minutes to get from my house down to beyond Fisher, may take an hour or longer. And that doesn't even factor in the situations of if you have car accidents either on Sawmill, on Riverside, or on 270. So I agree with the previous speakers. I oppose putting a park and ride at Bright Road because of the traffic congestion already existing in the area. I would also like to oppose it on fiscal grounds, that is, that if you put a park and ride there on Bright Road, people who are using this are people who are coming from Delaware County or Powell or North, they are on their way to jobs in Columbus. They come, they stop, they park their cars, they get in the bus, they go down to their job, they come back, they get in their cars and they go home. They don't spend any money at all in Dublin. There's absolutely nothing that would entice them to stay in the Bright Road area to do anything but to leave the area. That's why I agree with the previous proposals that we need to have a park and ride associated with the Bridge Street development, or even in the Dublin Village Center area. The advantage of having a park and ride in Dublin Village is that we already have acres of parking lot there, there's no structure that has to be built, and we have a few meager businesses still trying to hold out in that area. If there are cars, people going to that area, stopping and parking, they might consider going to a restaurant at Dublin Village, or might consider doing some other activity there, which would provide dollars to, to Dublin. So I think that really, either coupling it with the Bridge Street or setting up the park and ride there in Dublin Village makes more sense. It brings in more dollars to Dublin, gets people out doing things in Dublin rather than just passing through, and the people passing through are not citizens of Dublin. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cram?
Amy Cram, 7511 Riverside Drive. And tonight, I don't have to speed read, because I only have one sheet in front of me. And Mr. Roth already mentioned the position of the East Dublin Civic Association, so I'll try to mention some other points. I just want council to consider a no vote on this land swap, whether it's tonight or in two weeks when it comes back. And I certainly hope if it comes back as passing as emergency legislation, you still will allow public comment and not just pass this. It needs to be voted down because, I don't wanna overlap what other people said here. In this land swap, Cota wins and the citizens of Dublin lose. I understand Cota has needs to meet, and I have no doubt this is the absolute perfect location for a Cota. However, the residents, your constituents, deserve the right to negotiate a mutually acceptable location for this park and ride. This location should not be set by city staff. Voting no does not critically affect efforts to move forward in the Bridge, Bridge Street District with Bridge Park construction. City staff has numerous means for negotiating and acquiring property necessary for this roadway. The city can pay Cota for the land and the relocation of their business, just like the city did with the other businesses in the area, like the Spot River Ridge. City staff does not have to be the one finding land for Cota, getting approvals, taking it through P and Z, and designing and constructing this facility for Cota. You need to vote no on this and require Cota to negotiate with Dublin citizens, not Dublin staff. We need to say no tonight and give the citizens of Dublin a voice. East Dublin residents are not against a park and ride. We are against the proposed location. We welcome an opportunity to find this mutually acceptable location with Cota, preferably centrally located in Dublin and serving the Bridge Street corridor. This gives the voters a say in what happens to their neighborhood. A yes vote will guarantee this location, and, I don't wanna repeat that. We know that if the plan, the plan is presented by city staff to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a land deal already in place, and staff strongly encouraging Planning and Zoning to approve it, the park and ride will be at Bright and Emerald, at this prominent intersection on this new signature street at the eastern gateway of our community. We're gonna have an unattractive parking lot that generates no revenue for our city. Emerald Parkway is lined with corporate headquarters. We've got Cardinal, IGS, Delta Energy. And why is staff accepting a parking lot at this location? A yes vote just tells your constituents that their voice doesn't matter, so I strongly urge you to vote no on this and give the residents the chance to fight for their community and work with Cota to determine the location of this park and ride.
Thank you. Mr. Herring, please.
Good evening. Scott Herring, 3280 Lilly Mar Court. I shared a sentiment in many of the previous remarks, but I had an original thought this afternoon on this, because I was reading through the materials, and it looked like one of the key points one of the key points in the suggestion of using this parcel is that it was called excess land, that this is land the city acquired to build a roundabout, and now it's excess, and that this could be used as a new location for the Cota. If one of the goals from one of the other documents says that this really could and should stay in the Bridge Street corridor, then I ask, what about the parcel known as 6480 Riverside Drive, formerly the Wendy's Restaurant? That's listed as 2.37 acres. Perhaps half of that will be used to create the roundabout for Riverside and 161, but what will become of that excess city land? That'd be a great central location, certainly easy access. Even the slope of the hill might make it easy for Cota to build a parking deck, or even enhance the parking without it being such a sprawl. So that's this one idea that I had today, and I don't know if that's been discussed. Certainly, so far as land swap, that's one thing. And then, because I live over in the Martin Road corridor, and I've been before the city previously, I know it's not a city parcel, but there is a parcel. It doesn't have an address on the county auditor's website, but it would be approximately 4,001 West Dublin-Granville Road, next to the Stone Ridge. And it's an undeveloped property, because that's where the high-tension power lines are. And something like a parking lot would be great. The auditor lists that as three and a half acres. I don't know if Cota's looked at that, but that'd be a brilliant solution to that one empty lot that's really undevelopable because of the overhead lots, but could be a, so I offer this as suggestions, and hopefully, we can keep the park-and-ride in the Bridge Street corridor. Thank you.
Thanks for the input. Mr. Ritholz. Ritholz? Welcome.
My name is John Ritholz. I live at 4157 Macduff Way. That address is the second or third nearest residence to the land that's being talked about in this ordinance. We moved here 29 years ago to Dublin for many reasons, but one of which was that we thought at that time that the planning process for development put the citizens and residents as the highest priority. But it seems to me, and this is shown by how things have developed in this case, that this is no longer the case. The first we, the local community, heard about this development was the presentation at the Hard Road Fire Station that occurred two days after the first reading of this ordinance. We did not have any prior information about the first reading. And the presentation by the Planning Department made it very clear that the development was well-planned and well-on in its development. There had been no prior involvement, no preliminary involvement of anybody from the community. And this seems to be a concern to me, that this previous history of Dublin of having a great concern for inputs from the citizens is no longer the way it used to be. We know this is a small piece of development, and it doesn't have the visibility that other developments do, but maybe it's symptomatic of the fact that the planning process is now no longer taking into account the residents' view. What I'm here to ask is that the council does what it can to press the Planning Department to be more proactive in its involvement with the citizens. I echo what Randy Roth said about the East Dublin Civic Association, I'm sure is willing to get involved at any stage and keep citizens well-informed. And as far as the particulars of this development, I think we are going to provide, we personally, my wife and I, providing comments at the zoning and planning meeting in February, and no doubt at the second meeting that's now talked about for this. But it's really our concern that we, the citizens, don't feel that we are being listened to. And since I have a few seconds left, when the Emerald Parkway development was first coming in, I asked a question about what was planned for the periphery of, in the area of Bright Road. And I was told to look at the community plan. That was the best indication that we would have of what was coming. And certainly, the community plan, as I best remember it, did not look anything like we're talking about here. Obviously, not the details of plan and ride, but in more general terms of what was likely for that area around the Bright Road, Emerald Parkway, roundabout development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, discussion? Anybody?
I have some comments, and I guess some questions. I guess I'll open with the comment that, I don't want to single out, I guess, any particular speaker, but just say that I have occasion, several occasions, on a weekly basis to experience the traffic on Sawmill Road and Riverside Drive. I do venture away from the west side of Dublin. But on the west side of Dublin, I also encounter a fair amount of traffic, so I don't think it's unique to any particular part of Dublin. Anyway, having said that, there's been discussion in the community plan, and I was hoping somebody could clarify the community plan for me with respect to what's been designated. You know, there's been some conversation, you know, regarding, Mr. Roth commented regarding what was agreed to. I, you know, so can anybody help me out here?
Yeah, as far as the community plan, in the 2007 plan that was adopted, the area that's north of Bright Road and currently east of the now Emerald Parkway, was designated suburban office for future land use. Prior to that-
I'm sorry, what year was this?
It was in the 2007 community plan.
Okay, okay.
And prior to that, in the 1997 plan, I believe it was identified as existing residential or future residential. And then in the 2012 update, it was designated as a suburban office, which a park-and-ride is something that is allowable under that designation with a conditional use approval. And if there's anything that I've misstated, I would ask the Planning Director to correct me on that.
How does a change like that happen, Marcia?
Any of the changes relate to, I know in the '07 plan, we had, it was probably a three-year process of going through the update of the community plan. There were many, many meetings that were held. The Bright Road area plan is a special area plan that's reviewed. We probably have eight to 10 special areas in the city that were included and specifically studied for those areas. So any change that would occur would be as part of the review with the residents going through the process. Then it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they review the community plan and any updates that are made to it. Then they recommend to city council either adoption or modification, and then city council approves the, or adopts the, community plan. So there's multiple areas along the way, from just meetings and charrettes to formal adoption by the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council.
Okay. Amy?
Got the copy of the 2000 plan. We happen to have it written back in the council planning room, and it shows exactly that neighborhood office on that north corner.
What year is that?
2007.
Yep.
And mixed residential medium density on the southeast corner. So I guess, I mean, this is as I remember it. I don't know. I do know that we spent a lot of time in neighborhood meetings, and I can't, the idea that somebody switched it at the last minute doesn't really ring true. I mean, I'm sure it would be easy to get documents that were presented to the Planning Commission. You know, I mean, we could follow the Bright Road plan throughout the whole process and see, you know, maybe that would be something that would be useful, just for a point of clarification.
Part of our follow-up, the staff report for the next hearing, we'll make sure to include information related to that and address the other issues and concerns that were raised.
Process and dates and so forth.
Yeah. I wonder also if you might discuss what some of the criteria are that Cota is looking for, for that area of the community to serve.
We will. And we also, as we do this evening, will have a representative from Cota in attendance, so they can talk about how they go about looking at sites, some of the basis for where they locate, and the use of the park-and-rides themselves.
I don't know if, I read it in my material, or, we've had a material throughout the years on this, but it seemed to me that at one time, Cota had a discussion about, and I know even years ago, when they were looking at Sawmill Road itself, and we opposed a lot of that because of the locations of where they were considering them. But I thought that one of their major criteria was that they wanted to be north of 270. So going to the Dublin Village Center or some other alternative south of that would not be able to meet, is that still a criteria that they're using?
That's one of the items that they've discussed with that, with us, is that their preference is north of 270 in the Sawmill corridor.
And do we, in your materials, or, I don't know if you can answer this tonight, but in the materials we get, or perhaps we should have Cota address, what other sites did they consider to meet their needs in this area?
Yeah, and we can have that conversation with them to make sure we understand what they've done over the years, as well as our recent conversations with them.
We know where the current, or have a pretty good idea where the current users of that park-and-ride come from?
Yeah, Cota has extensive information on surveys, where the riders are coming from, and they've provided that information, and we'll make sure that that gets included in the information for the next council meeting.
And just to clarify, a significant number of those riders are Dublin residents, am I right?
Yeah, the current Dale Drive park-and-ride, a significant number are Dublin residents. There's also riders outside of the Dublin area, but that's kind of how park-and-rides are set up.
I was going to mention the routing, which you mentioned earlier, in terms of where the bus goes.
Yeah, go ahead.
In terms of traffic, I mean, it's moving, it's not going to Sawmill Road, is that correct?
No, no. It'll go down Emerald Parkway to Riverside Drive and make a southbound turn on-
Cota told us at the meeting, we use Bright Road, Sawmill Road as-
You know what? We'll clarify that, and that'll be part of the next, of the next meeting when Cota comes to P&amp;Z. So make sure we get that detailed.
If you look at their documentation, they're going down Emerald to Riverside.
I know.
So.
We'll hear it right from them, and that'll be part of the P&amp;Z process.
And then additionally, I think it'd be important to clarify the riders at the Smokey Row park-and-ride sites, because it's my understanding the ridership is very low there, and it doesn't make sense, business sense, for Cota to continue to have a park-and-ride in that location if it's not used.
Yeah, there is low ridership, and we'll include that information, and some of the other reasons that Cota's looking at to consolidate those locations.
And then, one of the speakers asked about the park-and-ride in Dublin, and do we need it. I think that would be important to be addressed.
Ross, go ahead.
Additionally, you know, Cota is another public entity, and they have a business to run, you know, as we do. It's, I don't think that it is something that residents can negotiate, and I think that's, you know, sort of a miscommunication or a misunderstanding. This is something that has to be worked out, public entity to public entity, if they're going to locate on land and within our community. I wonder about the suggestion of the power line easement. You know, that sounds like, you know, an idea. I don't know, you know, how Cota might feel about that, but that's something. And then, you know, this is creating a significant amount of heartburn for people. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but I wonder, you know, over the course of time, you know, things change, and, you know, we haven't had a park-and-ride on the west side of the river before. We're looking to put one there, because we believe that there will be ridership and that people will use the Cota service if it's available. You know, we've had the park-and-ride on Dale Drive for I don't know how many years. That's, you know, evolving and changing as our community evolves and changes. You know, the park-and-ride moves to another location. My guess is that as our community grows and changes, you know, it's possible that it'll move yet again, and maybe they'll find a different location somewhere else. So it seems to me that this is sort of a fluid thing, and as land values change, you know, as land uses change, this is something that, you know, may stay in a location, and then, over time, it would become, you know, there'll be a different or better location.
Yeah, and Cota is currently looking at a site on the western edge of Dublin as a park-and-ride site. And it is something that they do on an ongoing basis, is to survey where their riders are coming from and look for opportunities that they may have as to where the best locations are. And one of the things that, you know, we've talked about transit and Bridge Street, one of the things that we hope is that going forward, more and more people do use public transportation, and some of the issues that relate to transportation and the amount of traffic, that that can be modified. And some of, you know, we talk about the millennials and the young workers, and I think some of their methods of travel are going to be different than ours. And so, you're right, that there probably will be changes, even if this location is selected at some point in the future. There either will be a need to change or a need to add.
Right. And the third point I would make is, I view Cota as a strategic partner with our community. We have a lot of them. That has been a hallmark of our city for many years. We develop partnerships with entities for mutual benefit. And Cota is, you know, the expert in moving people and on, you know, buses, and I think that going forward in the Bridge Street District and in other parts of our community, you know, Cota will become even more important to our community, and will continue to be a strategic partner. And so, you know, there has to be some give and take between the two entities to figure out, you know, mutually beneficial solutions.
I also, I just wanted to add, Marcia touched on it, you know, but staff and council have been in discussions, golly, it's probably been two years or more regarding a Cota site, park-and-ride site on the west side. And to be a little more specific, on Post Road, just east of, I'm sorry, just west of the Avery Muirfield Post Road Roundabout. So I just ask you all to, you know, keep some perspective, consider that particular location relative to this one that we're discussing this evening. I recognize that it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but I think it speaks to what we've heard staff say and what we've heard council say about a continual exploration of opportunities to utilize mass transit within our community, which I expect will be in greater demand as we go forward. You know, I only wish gas would stay at $2 a gallon forever, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Very good. Mr. Peterson?
Thanks, ma'am. My concern on this issue has all along been the process, and how are we going about reaching the substantive solution? And the process has bothered me. I know it's bothered my fellow council members, and I think it's interesting to know, I think, Marcia, if I understood this correctly, had the change in the planning and zoning personnel not have occurred, this matter was planned to go on the planning and zoning agenda before the agreement ever came to council.
It was planned to be heard on January 22nd, which would have been after the initial reading or the introduction to, with council, but it would have been, tonight would have been after the review by Planning and Zoning.
Okay, so that changed, that adjustment in that agenda would not, would have allowed a P&amp;Z hearing before tonight?
Correct.
And now, if we table this, that'll still allow exactly what it is we had intended to do?
That's right.
Okay. I think that the P&amp;Z process is incredibly important, and that neighborhood involvement that was mentioned is exactly why it's so important, and that has always been my concern about the way that we are doing this. I understand the time constraints in the Bridge Street District and the different authority and the change in legislation and whatnot, but it bothered me there was not that input. So I would be very supportive of the idea of tabling this vote until that process played itself out in a more normal way. Substantively, I would like the information that is going to be coming. I think that the, how it evolved in the community plan, and how that happened, and make sure that we can document that this is how, because I'd be interested in knowing, how did this happen? You know, Randy's a tremendously passionate person, and he's a believable person. I think he has that, his community's best interests at heart, but there's somewhere, there's a miscommunication or a disconnect or something that I'd like to try to get figured out, so we can sort of all understand what happened and why it happened, and as he says, come up with a solution that everybody can live with. So substantively, I would like to have a lot more information before I feel comfortable reaching a conclusion. I don't know that I feel comfortable reaching a conclusion now without that extra substantive information, but process- without that extra substantive information, but process-wise, I would be supportive of tabling this and allowing the P and Z process to go forward, and then we come back and revisit it again at the next council.
Yeah, Mr. Gerber?
Yeah, so Greg, I think my views are more closely aligned with yours. Process, process, process. It's the most important thing we all do here. It's where we gain our trust, and it's where I think we do the best service for our community. The planning and zoning, the conditional use is a very strict examination. It will hopefully vet out a lot of the concerns that we have here, here this evening with respect to its location, its practicality with respect to the surrounding area. So I support, excuse me, I support it going through that process before it comes back here. I'd also like, Marcia, thank you for offering, and I would like to see these, all the documents and the history of this. I think that might clarify a few things in my mind. And going forward, I know we're gonna have a retreat here in a few weeks, and when we do, you know, I think we need to examine, and we plan to, to examine this process of how sometimes things may appear to fall through the cracks. You gotta fix that. So I'm certainly in favor of a tabling tonight, and let's see what happens at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that is a public meeting, and we'll come back here for another public meeting, so we'll continue the dialogue.
I think it's, thank you, Rick. I think it's clear that most of council, really all of council supports the process in terms of moving it, perhaps tabling it tonight, moving it to P and Z. This was clearly a timing issue. Staff explained that. We have other issues that we have to deal with. I want everybody to know that I've been doing this a long time, and it's very difficult when you have decisions like this. People want fire stations, but they don't want them next to them. People want water towers, but they don't want them next to them. And, you know, the elected officials have very, very difficult decisions to make. We'll take all the information, we'll weigh it, we'll look at it very carefully, and there'll be two more opportunities for the residents to speak. Appreciate all the input tonight, and with that, I'll make a motion that we table ordinance number four dash fifteen.
Second.
Thank you. Ann?
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes. Thanks to everybody for coming out. Okay, that'll move us on to, where am I at, Ann? Five fifteen?
Yes, authorizing provision of certain incentives to Aspen Energy Corporation to induce it to locate the main office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Jeremiah?
Yes.
Mayor, members of council?
I'll introduce it.
I'm sorry. My fault. Carry on.
So before you, just a staff memo. This economic development staff has been in discussions with Aspen Energy about their relocation and expansion of their corporate headquarters. As the EDA details, the city of Dublin proposes a five-year, 15% performance incentive on the 45 new jobs, so it must be noted that no incentives are offered on the relocation of the 40 existing jobs that will be coming initially to Dublin. With that, I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions? If not, we'll have the second reading February 9. Thank you. Ordinance six, page fifteen.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate purchase agreement to acquire approximately 11.856 acres of property known as Colton Back Park from Washington Township.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Michelle, Jennifer?
Good evening, members of council. As council's aware, Washington Township approached the city several months ago, expressing an interest in transfer of this property. The ordinance before you this evening for this first reading is to execute such a transfer, and this would, the effective date of the transfer would be March 11th, which would be 30 days after the second reading of the ordinance. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you this evening.
Any questions, council? You know, I had my first, my first public meeting as an elected official there in 1983 in that building. It seems like yesterday.
Wow. I just wanted to clarify, it says we are acquiring. Can you tell me what we're paying for it?
It's at no cost.
Thank you.
Be a dollar for the transfer, probably. Thank you. Any other discussion? Not the second reading on this will be held February 9 as well. Ordinance seven dash fifteen.
Authorizing appropriation of a 0.006 acre, more or less, fee simple interest from the estate of Basil J. Brown for the property, located off Riverside Drive, north of Dale Drive, for relocation of Riverside Drive, and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Ms. Reedler?
Thank you. This ordinance for the acquisition of property needed for the relocation of Riverside Drive, you'll recall we had a resolution of intent to appropriate at the last meeting. This is the next step in the process. You'll recall that we indicated at the last meeting that we were having difficulty locating, the title was not clear, and so we were locating heirs. At least one heir has been identified. That process will go through, there's a process with probate court to determine the estate. You'll note that the value of the appraisal is $900. It's for a very small portion of land. And with that, the law department is recommending approval of ordinance seven dash fifteen tonight.
This was basically an orphan piece?
Exactly.
And when the $900 came out, people came out of the woodwork. Thank you. Any council questions? I'll move to dispense with the public hearing and treat us as an emergency. We do have public testimony, Mr. Mauer. Sorry.
Put the case that this one identified heir, or some other identified heirs, work like beavers and show up, claim the spot after the city has taken it. Are we, we are sure, I take it, that the quick take appropriation is ironclad?
If we take the quick take process, we'll post the $900 with the court, and then we can proceed, we can get onto the property, and then figure out exactly the, you know, who's entitled to that money. But it won't stop the work on the parcel.
Big part.
It won't stop the work on the parcel clarifying that title.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Would you like to make your motion again, Rick? I'll just ask for a second to my motion. Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes. And we have an update on the library project. Mr. Meyer is here, I believe.
Yeah, Terry Fugler's gonna give a brief introduction and give you some background information, and Darren will make the presentation.
Thank you.
Give Darren a chance to get his flash drive in the computer here as well. We probably should be titling this something different than Library Update. If council will recall, we suggested, and council authorized, a while back, that given the activities being planned and improved in and around the library area, it was important for the city to take a more comprehensive look at the various public infrastructure and private improvement projects that were being planned comprehensively, so we can understand the relative impacts and make sure that those public and private investments occurred in a way that reinforced the goals and visions for the historic district. Just by way of background, the Columbus Municipal Library has focused the efforts on the new library facility and its existing site in Dublin. As part of that site, there will be a series of gridded roadway systems around that site that will impact its development. We have important investments in the Veterans Memorial Facility, cemetery, and other related facilities. There's a school next door. If you look to the east side of the street, the Crawford-Hoyne Projects proposed a very large-scale mixed-use project that needed to be looked at. As was mentioned earlier tonight, there's a lot of park planning and development acquisition happening further to the east. There's a pedestrian bridge that we've been looking at how to bring up and properly land in the historic district. And to look at these things comprehensively, understand the roadway systems, infrastructure, and how those might inform some of these public and private investments has been the purpose of this planning effort. What we wanted to do this evening was kind of give an update to Dublin and council. There will be, I think, more engaged kind of public sessions on this as the library concepts for its building begin to emerge, where we can get more formal public input, but we wanted to get council an update tonight as well as the public to get view the status of that planning effort. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Darren.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Good evening. We're gonna walk through a few updates as Terry mentioned, and I wanted to first orient you to the graphic. This will be the background for all of the exhibits we look at this evening. What you see is historic Dublin, just west of the Souda River. You can see the Souda River down here. The two roads in gray are Bridge Street, and this is High Street, Dublin Road, running through here. And you can see in green, this is the Indian Run. This view has a mix of some existing conditions and some proposed, and we'll sort of clarify that as we move through this. There are two active development parcels in this area that Terry mentioned. The one on top, this block, is the location that's being proposed and studied for the new CML Dublin branch, the library branch, and this is the Bridge Park West development. It's currently being proposed by Crawford-Hoyne. And we're gonna take a look at how these two developments are being served by the surrounding street network and parks and open space and the pedestrian bridge landing. I've highlighted a few more existing streets here, just for discussion to set up about streets. This is Mill, this is North Street, and North River View. The areas that we're showing in red are part of the thoroughfare plan and the refinement of that plan as we move through this process. We're studying an extension of Franklin Street that would go from Bridge Street over to the Indian Run green space here. This is a new street as well, Rock Crest, that would run west along the Indian Run green space and potentially have a future connection west here. And you can see that these two streets complete a public street network around the future library site. We're also showing a potential extension of North River View Street up to connect to Dublin Road. Right now, when you come down North Street, you tee into North River View. It has a dead end to the south, and it runs down to a parking lot here to the north, and both for emergency services and for public frontage on the park, and a number of reasons we're studying making that connection through here, back up to Dublin Road. And you can also see that at some future date, the thoroughfare plan anticipates a vehicular road connection in alignment with John Shields Parkway that would then extend up to Post Road. The roads that are being dashed are existing roads that may be reconstructed and have some changes made as part of the library and Bridge Park West development. North Street, in this portion, in this block here, has some angled parking. It has some areas where the right-of-way is limited. So among the things that are being studied there are the conversion of angled parking to more traditional parallel parking, and looking again at those right-of-way widths, if they're adequate to provide sidewalks that we would need to serve those areas. You can see a little bit of North River View that would be improved as part of this. And then High Street merits a little discussion here. From North Street up to its future connection to a potential vehicular crossing here would have some changes to it. As we started to look at traffic flow and traffic demand in this area, High Street is going to have some turning lanes that will be added to get you onto Rock Crest Parkway. Would have some turning lanes that would get you onto John Shields Parkway here, and so there would be some widening involved in that process. And among the things that we're looking at is how that impacts High Street as it passes over the culvert, over the Indian Run here, and then how that transitions over to John Shields Parkway and that future connection. So there would be some widening, there would be some turn lanes that would both potentially serve these developments and also these roadway connections that are part of the thoroughfare plan. From a grade standpoint, there's quite a bit of fall from the west towards the river. If we look at the new intersection of High Street and Rock Crest where my laser is now and assume that that is level zero, you climb almost 30 feet up to the Franklin Street extension. So you have almost a two-story climb to that point. You climb about five feet to the intersection of North and High, and you climb about 20 to 25 feet to this intersection. So there's quite a bit of grade change that the library development site, its solutions for parking and the adjacent park space will have to navigate as part of this process. This exhibit may be a little difficult to see. This shows where street parking is being studied. Throughout the Bridge Street District, we're trying to get parallel parking wherever we can in order to serve local businesses, serve local residents, and so we have studied where that could potentially be incorporated on these roads. You can see the dash lines on either side of Franklin. Likewise, here we discussed on North. We'd like to try and extend that as far as we can on High Street or Dublin Road, moving to the north. Although, as I mentioned, when we get in the culvert, there are some structural and environmental considerations we'll have to look at there. There may be the potential to include some parking on North River View as it extends down and then back up here to Dublin Road. Are there any questions on the streets before we discuss the pedestrian bridge? The pedestrian bridge, the previous studies that have been done and the work that you've seen showed a connection between sort of the center of activity on the east side, which is the Bridge Park East development that Crawford-Hoyne is doing. This is the former Dale Drive, and connecting over to North Street. There are a number of challenges with this location as we've been looking at this more closely that has caused us to look at a potential shift of that orientation on the west side. North Street drops down 15, 20 feet from High Street, so again, you have difficulty moving pedestrians back up to High Street by an accessible route. The properties here right now, the pedestrian bridge lands essentially in some of the back doors and parking lots of these developments, and it's not an ideal location from centering that and some activity as part of redevelopment. So one of the options that's being studied is a slight shift of the west landing to the north. Has some, several advantages. It connects us to the cycle track loop, which is the bike facilities that are being planned as part of the Bridge Street District that connects all the way through to the east side here and then back up around, looping around here Post Road. It's a great threshold into the Indian Run Park system here. It terminates into a great civic use with the library. There's the potential for shared public parking here, a parking reservoir that you'd be able to access the park and bike track, bike facility system from there. And we also are able to bring that bridge up to High Street grade and not have it 15 or 20 feet down below High Street. And we're able to do that with a very, very, very gentle climb across here, and it's an accessible route. So this is emerging as potentially preferred alignment on the west side, and we're studying all the aspects of that in terms of how emergency vehicles move under it, how people would access the bridge, and you can see some of the renderings that have been done previously of the bridge architecture here. And then lastly, we wanted to show a few images of how all these pieces are coming together, because frankly, this is very exciting, to have a great civic use and the library being reconstructed, the exciting development that Crawford-Hoyne is starting to study and develop here, the connection to the park on the west side and the pedestrian bridge that brings you over to the east side development, and really accessing the great amenity in the Indian Run. So I'm just gonna go quickly here through a couple images that show very, very conceptual and early models of how these pieces are coming together. So you can see the pedestrian bridge. This arrow orients your view. We're sort of floating over the west side park. Looking west here, you can see some potential redevelopment of Bridge Park West. This is the grounds of remembrance in the Indian Run Greenway, and this is the future library site. This is a view looking down the new Rock Crest Parkway. So we're right here, and we're looking back to the east towards the pedestrian bridge. So again, you can see potential pieces of Bridge Park West, pedestrian bridge in the background, the grounds of remembrance is off to our left. A view looking north, or excuse me, south on High Street with Bridge Park West to your left and the grounds of remembrance to your right. And one of the things that I wanted to mention here, I've mentioned the grounds of remembrance several times, this is gonna be an area that we'll look at very carefully to make sure that when we put a new intersection in, we have some new redevelopment in this area. The energy's gonna be fantastic. We wanna make sure that when we have a Veterans Memorial, that we are able to design a buffer between that memorial and the public streets and those public spaces, so that we can maintain a reflective, contemplative, you know, honorific space there as it deserves, and have some filters between that and the activity that we may have, the new street. That's an area that deserves a lot of study, and we're gonna dig into that as well. Thank you.
Can I just follow up with a quick question?
Please.
Marcia, not sure who would be the right person to answer this, but do we have a sense of the timeframe yet with the library system?
Well, we're still in the process of completing some of the program analysis of the library, and then also looking at potential opportunities with the Dublin Arch Council and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so that timeframe, I believe there's another meeting that's scheduled next week to review the status of that. So somewhere, sometime after that, we'll have a better understanding of what we think may fit into that facility based upon some... may fit into that facility based upon some limitations or issues that we have to deal with, with the site. And I don't know if there's anything else that Terry was on to add.
I think that's accurate. The library and the design team have formally launched, beginning to put concepts together that incorporate these various uses, looking at the potentials for how much parking and how much excess parking can be provided. The street elevations that you've seen now are giving them definition to that site in a much clearer way. So they are now going to be producing some of those first initial concepts, both to help vet the feasibility of those other uses coming together as well as informing the design and layout of the site. So I think there's probably going to be stuff shared, certainly within a 60-day timeframe, that some ideas will start to emerge to be shared for broader consumption.
You think we'll have plans by the end of the year?
I think they're hopeful. Initially, the development was targeted towards trying to get construction started by end of summer. I think the notion of all the stuff had to be integrated kind of concluded that was too aggressive. So I think the hope and the goal is to try to get the planning and design work done this year.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Council committee reports. Planning and zoning representative, Amy?
Yes, I had the pleasure to attend the last planning commission meeting along with yourself, Mayor Keenan and Vice Mayor Gerber. And Joel Campbell actually came and spoke about public service, and he spoke very eloquently as he always does, and really, I think, added a great component to the evening. And I appreciate whoever's idea that was because it was a terrific one. Mr. Campbell really...
I think we need to give Vice Mayor Gerber and Mr. Peters some credit for that.
That was a terrific idea because he just sort of framed the idea of public service and what our role is. So that was a treat. And our planning commission, the four new members were sworn in. I think we've hit a home run. I think these folks are going to do a great job. They're ready to hit the ground running, and they will. And we had a training session that lasted a couple hours, and we'll continue with their training, and we look forward to a very full agenda with them on February 5th.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrative committee, Rick?
Yes, thank you. As you all are aware, we had a brief administrative committee meeting here this evening at 5:45 to, and thank all of you for your comments over the last couple of weeks with respect to ideas, suggestions, thoughts, comments for the goal-setting retreats. We put together some ideas for an agenda, and we will have that prepared for circulation prior to the next council meeting for everybody's review and comment, and hopefully we can go with that. Also, excuse me, we are, we'll put together a list of potential facilitators for everybody's thought and comment as well.
Very good. Community development, I don't believe anything, and I know John is out, and I don't think anything's transpired there. Finance, Mary Lee?
No.
Nothing? Public services, Amy?
No, we have, we have the one item on our agenda, and we will continue to look for an opportune meeting date.
Okay. And the DAC, John again is out. Board of Education, Greg?
Mayor, you and Dana and I met with Brian Deitch.
That's right.
Name the new chief operating officer for the Dublin Public Schools, a very engaging guy. I mean, he is a breath of new and fresh air, and I would encourage it, all of us, if you have an opportunity to just have a cup of coffee with him. He is a very dynamic guy that I think is going to do a great job, and we really enjoyed the meeting.
He had a lot of work together with, as a superintendent in another district with the city that they were actually located in. Actually, he and Dr. Hoadley were in adjoining districts, both were superintendents at a time, and he really is an interesting guy, really interested in creating more synergy between the city and the schools. So that's all good stuff.
Yep.
Thank you. Morsy, Mary Lee?
Yes, we had a regional roundtable meeting last week, and I asked Ann to put at your places the Insight 2050 scenario metric summary, and we'll have more discussion about that, perhaps at our goal setting. This is very high level of what the results of 2050 was, and we'll have more discussion about more meat on these and then where we fit in Dublin. And also, they gave out the Senate and House districts for the area that Morsy serves. And so you also have copies of that so that you know who represents all of us. At these meetings, I chair the meetings, and I started a year ago having someone on the group actually do a presentation about their community or their organization that they're representing in the regional policy roundtable. And this month, we had Mayor Kim Maggard from the city of Whitehall. And she did a great presentation, and she's really changing, I think, working very hard to change the image of Whitehall and what they, the services that they have to offer to their community, residents. And I know I, for one, am now going to go drive by the area. They have new parks that they've purchased and put things in for people to do and changing the downtown Main Street and everything. And so I would encourage everybody to drive down that area and see as they progress to improve the community. You might have seen in the news where they had started these programs to offer grant awards to their citizens to upgrade the external appearance of their homes, either through new windows or siding or landscaping. And she said that money, they put $100,000 into the fund, and in five days, it was gone. So they're going to do it again next year. And I think she's being pretty innovative and looking at ways that they have a lower-income resident group and ways that they can help them, but they, to improve their properties because her feeling is that a lot of the reputation of any city is when people are driving down the street and look at the external of both commercial and residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Very good. We appreciate your representation, leadership, Mary Lee, on behalf of City Council at Morsy. So thank you for that. Tim, US 33.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Attended a meeting this afternoon with Marcia and Dana and, of course, representatives of the other jurisdictions. And of course, as you all know, this is a responsibility that I'm sharing with the mayor. But interestingly, Mr. Murdoch was there and distributed the same document, gave a brief presentation. And, you know, of course, Morsy represents, how many counties? 15? Or it's quite a number. But with, you know, diverse interests and populations and so forth, and, you know, but it's interesting that in some respects, but, you know, on different scales, you know, they're, you know, considering the same things that we're considering in terms of, you know, future growth and demands on transportation and land use and so forth. And so it's interesting to, you know, listen to it, you know, from their perspective. If you look at this document that was distributed to us and you look at the scenario A, and if, you know, land was to develop, you know, as it has based on existing trends, it would consume 495 square miles, and someone there from Union County pointed out that that is equal to the size or greater than all the land in Union County. So just to give you some perspective. So, you know, the conversation is interesting. They are, you know, giving consideration to some of the same things that we are in terms of more dense development, you know, not develop, you know, large lot estates and those kinds of things. And, you know, it's, you know, we're not alone in this, and, you know, so I think that's interesting, and when you consider the impact on our transportation network and so forth. But it's a, you know, it's a good thing for us to be involved in, and I look forward to our future participation. That next meeting, by the way, is February 23rd.
Very good.
Same location, same time.
Good. Thank you, Tim. So with that, that brings us to roundtable, and I'm going to break a little bit with normal protocol and point out that this is Marcia's last meeting.
Big smile, huh?
Twenty-five years. We're not going to ask you to speak, but I was going to ask everybody to say a word or two. But I do appreciate everything you've done and the support you've given, given me over these last many years that I've been involved, last 10, 11, 12 years on City Council. You've always been the voice of reason, and as I said, your word has been the gold standard. Nobody has more integrity, and we appreciate that. I did a little, a little thing here. These are some assumptions, but I figured 25.5 years of service, averaging 48 weeks a year, taking into consideration time off or vacation, et cetera. I made some assumptions that you did hours per week in meetings, 10 internal staff meetings, six council-related meetings, six others as defined as partners, agencies, and residents. You want to know what that added up to?
Sure.
26,928 hours in meetings. Meetings.
Meetings.
Sitting with people in meetings. So I thought that was, I thought that was an interesting number. So thank you for your service. Greg, you want to say a few words, and we'll just go around the...
Yeah, just real quick, the, what do you call, you call it a snow event? Is that what we call what we had last night?
Oh, hey, Greg, I was going to ask that everybody maybe just addressed Marcia real quick. We'll go back to regular roundtable.
I will.
My bad.
It will, I just want to tell a quick story, though.
Okay.
Because it does address Marcia.
Very good.
We had occasion to be up on Sawmill Road relatively early this morning with my kids who didn't go to school today, and it was a mess. And we drove down, and we were driving down, Sawmill Road was just a mess. And we ended up down Coffin Road, heading over to First Watch to get some, something to eat, and the road was clear. And I look over, and not only is the road clear, the bike path next to the road is clear. And I said to my kids, I said, "Look at that. The road is clear and the bike path is clear." And my daughter, who's lucky to even notice that it snowed, said, "Dublin is no ordinary town." And it occurred to me, and I knew that this was your last meeting, and that sort of summarized you for me better than I could have summarized it myself. You're not only, not only an ordinary professional, you're no ordinary person. And you have led this city with grace and wisdom that I personally thank you for and on behalf of my family, who I think we're going to be here for a long time, I'd just like to thank you for your service.
Very good. Let's clap. Well said, Greg. Amy?
I would agree with everything that was said. For me, I think the standard that we all hold ourselves to as public servants is, you know, leaving the place better than when we found it. And when I think about your tenure with the city of Dublin and everything that's happened and everything that's changed and all of the things that you've seen and all the things that you've brought with your talent and your intellect and your integrity, it is without a doubt that our community is so much exponentially better off for you having been here, and I want to thank you very much for your service. I'm going to miss you very much, and hopefully I'll see you around the neighborhood. Thank you, Marcia.
Mary Lee?
Well, Marcia, as you know, I said at Morsy because I had the opportunity to have the microphone for a few minutes, and I indicated that it was a pretty scary proposition for all of us sitting up here that you were leaving, that, you know, we felt safe, I think. I know I sure did and do, under your leadership, all of the different roles that you've played, that you've always been calm in the midst of some very excitable times. And as Amy's pointed out, your ethics have been above reproach, really. But you've always been a solution-oriented person, and that's what I have learned from you and enjoyed most about you, that even when you were saying no to us, we never felt like you were really saying that, that you provided us with some kind of a solution that was better for the community at large. And I know you'll, you'll miss all of us terribly, I know that, and these long Monday night meetings and others, but you will have a wonderful time in retirement, and of course, you're always welcome back to this side of the podium after you retire. But thank you very much.
And don't respond to that missing us comment. Tim?
Marcia, your retirement truly marks the end of an era in Dublin city government, and I think that future Dublin history books should include a chapter dedicated to Marcia Grigsby. I know we could go well into the evening describing your many valuable contributions to not only Dublin city government, but to the community at large and its evolution into the premier community that it is today. In an era when few employees remain with the same employer for the 25 years that you have served Dublin, both the community and our local government have been lucky that you chose to stay with us. I not only admire your modest style of leadership, but the outstanding example you set with respect to work ethic and dedication. It's not enough to thank you for your service to Dublin, but I do thank you. I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with you. I've learned a great deal as a result of working with you. Wish you all the best, and I'll miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rick?
We've said so much. Marcia, you've been blessed with a storybook career, and the community has been a factor of that. And, you know, I just want to say thank you. Enjoyed working with you. Like you, I don't say a whole lot, but I just want you to know it's deep heartfelt thanks, and I appreciate the chance to work with you and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words? You don't have to, but I know you don't like to, but...
I would like to. I've been very blessed to have had the opportunity to work with the city of Dublin for so long. You know, when you think about it, it's hard to believe that it's been that long, and there are times that you thought you would never get to this point. But I've been very fortunate to have been involved in so many projects, initiatives, and in a lot, it's in part because of the people who were on council and the fact that council was always looking for what was best for the community, and you had faith in what staff was doing. We got to take chances that I believe other communities are never allowed to take chances with. When I have talked to my peers in the past, they would be surprised at the things as finance director that I was involved in. And I think I was the fortunate one, and I was given an opportunity that afforded me a challenge all the time. I mean, it truly was fun, and it was kind of like, almost like, find something that you think we can't do, and we'll find a way to do it. So it's been, it's been very rewarding. I've, I kind of have looked at this as like my family business, and I think that early on, we kind of all felt that way. It's like, by God, we're going to build this city, and we're going to be able to look back and be proud of what we've done. And I think I'm just very happy that I can say all the things that I've been involved of, involved in. And when you drive around the community, it's very rewarding to know that you had a little piece of what's happened, and you can remember back on projects and things that you've been involved in. The staff that has worked here, both past and present, is unparalleled, and I think you get the best here in Dublin because we offer these opportunities. So, you know, I truly appreciate all the comments. It means a lot to me. But I am looking forward to retirement, and I will watch some council meetings on Monday nights just for the heck of it. But again, thank you very much. I appreciate all the support and everything that I've had the opportunity to do here in Dublin. The party last week was amazing. You know, it is something that I don't look forward to those kind of things, but I truly had fun, and it was a good time. So I appreciate council's willingness to do things like that. So thank you, and thanks to all of the staff. It's been great. I'm extremely lucky and fortunate to have been able to be here as long as I have, and I truly do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Well, as we pass the torch, Dana, it's a big torch to carry. So as we carry on into the, into the, into the future, we're looking for big things to continue. So thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
One staff comment, work-related.
Uh-huh.
One of the things that, in the 2015 operating budget, there was a position in tax that was at the time referred to as Assistant Director of Taxation. It's now been titled Tax Manager. And this...
And this position is kind of like the second-in-command and typically, or we're required by charter to have a competitive selection process. And we have a candidate, an internal candidate, Brian Thurman, who has worked in the Finance Department over the last four, five years. Actually, it's longer than that. I think he came in '08. And prior to that, years ago, he was in the Tax Department and he at one time was the Tax Administrator. And Brian has an interest in the Tax Manager position. He's very qualified and would be a great asset to the Tax Department. And still, he provides some crossover or cross-training with, with Finance in general. So we would like to ask council to make a motion to waive the requirements of Section 606 of the Charter and allow us to appoint Brian to the position.
Very good.
Some of, second.
We have a motion and a second. We know Brian well, we know he's very qualified. Ann?
Ms. Nisi Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back to regular roundtable around the corner there. Greg, do you have anything else? Thank you. Amy?
I did have a couple things. I wanted to point out, just for the record, the Wallace tract is being cleared of underbrush, which should be of great benefit to the neighborhood. Also, I wanted to point out the Citizen University and as well as the KIDS, the Kids Volunteer Project. I get asked a lot about how can my kids get involved in the community? How can we volunteer as a family? And I think this is a terrific opportunity to develop our volunteer base, so Christine's thinking ahead. But really, I think those are two exciting opportunities for our residents to be involved in. Third thing is the Art in Public Places policy, the site selection policy. I noticed in here the procedure and sort of the sequence of events, and we're going to be asked to approve this next council meeting. And I wanted to know in what sort of steps, where do we involve the public in notifying the public that the site's been selected or the site's under consideration and taking public input with regard to that? I think that's really important going forward to make sure that folks are informed about where these things are going to be.
Yeah, no, I'll ask Michelle to address anything that I missed here. But one of the things, this, this policy would just be to affirm what the process will be. And then as far as the selection of any site, that would still be handled through a council meeting where it's public meeting and would have public input. Staff in conjunction with the Dublin Arts Council would review and make recommendations on the site, but it's subject to council's final review and approval.
And we could add some language to that effect, so it's incorporated in here. The public comment would be that, that opportunity for public comment would come when this comes before council for site selection. And then obviously, we work very closely with the public after the site's been selected.
Right. I guess my concern is more on the front end. You know, the, the last thing we want to do is have a situation where a piece of public art is not understood, not welcomed, or if residents feel they're, you know, being pushed to the side on the process or that we get too far ahead of ourselves. And I know that that's not what staff wants either. So I just want to spell that out and maybe how we get at this is having the Planning Commission, or I'm sorry, similar to what we do with the planning project. We notify residents in an area, utilize our homeowners association representatives that, I know our Community Relations Department keeps those folks on file, but really proactively engage neighborhoods. Because I think most of the time, I mean, I know, you know, in my neighborhood, it would be exciting if a public art project were to be located in our park or something. I, I think it would. But somebody living across the street, you know, just needs to be informed that this is under consideration so that they can provide the input. I think you know where I'm going.
So when we get four, or five, or six or different locations that, on the front end, that we don't really, we're down to one or two that we need to select, that, that, that number, that six, seven, or eight would then be vetted. People would be put on notice. Because it's kind of the cart before the horse. If you pick it...
Right.
So we have to get that group together. So we're not saying we're going to put it in all seven or eight locations, but generally we get options. And I'm sure that's where you're going.
Right. And, and another idea, just thinking out loud here, is maybe we think about six or eight possibly suitable locations and then we can put, you know, plaques in those areas, you know, future site of, you know, public art or potential future site, you know, call this number.
Get the public input and go from there.
Right, right. I just want to make sure folks understand.
I think we've got a lot of options going forward with everything that's going on. We have a library going up, we have a Bridge Street project, there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of suspects. So that'll be good. Good.
Definitely. Anyway, just, just a thought. No, that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrily.
Also on that policy, Michelle, under procedure number one, I wrote down that we might also want to include the council rep on, from the very beginning of the procedure. So since we do have a council rep on the Dublin Arts Council, that person should be designated as one of the people involved in the discussion, apart from whoever the DAC may bring. And that'd be a, you know, a direct line then to us.
That's great. And we do meet quarterly, city staff and Dublin Arts Council staff and our council rep is at all those meetings as well.
Yeah, great. Also, on the inaugural meeting of the Communications Advisory Committee, which I don't think is you, who attended that meeting?
Merrily, I couldn't remember exactly all the names right now, but we have about 22 on that committee and about 14 people attended. We had business people, young professionals, residents, school CVB, they were there. So we had a, we had a good representation. But I can, I can go ahead and include that entire list for council. And as a matter of fact, as we move forward and have more meetings, we want to be able to track the attendance and the contribution that they're making.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to have both who attended and who did not.
Sure.
Okay? And, you know, I thought, I liked your summary, I mean, I appreciated getting your summary. And of course, several of the things that you listed are things that we've been hearing, our concerns to the district. And some of the recommendations were things that we have talked about that we were going to be doing about communication and providing them with something to give out to their customers.
It's going to be a great group, I think. And, and you notice, we expanded from transportation to include other projects that are coming up and they're really excited about making contributions.
Great. The Independence Day ticketing and table sales. I was, the complaints that were registered in this memo were things that I heard quite a bit about from people following last summer's event also. So I hope we could perhaps have a discussion at one of our council committees. I'm not sure which one is appropriate, whether it's community development or public service or committee as a whole or something, because, you know, the, making changes, which we definitely need to make, but I think we want to be participating in that discussion before the decisions are all made and we're informed about them. I'd like to congratulate the Police Department on their re-accreditation. And as indicated in the memo, I was able to be one of the people that was able to be interviewed by the accreditors. And, you know, I tried to say some good things about them, but no. Fortunately, because I had graduated from the Police Academy and all like Rick, that I was able to, I think, contribute a little bit more than just saying that they, you know, their uniforms were good-looking and, and that the chief was a nice guy. But I had the opportunity to represent Mike at the MLK Day celebration last Monday. And I've gone to almost all of them really since the inception. And this by far, to me, seemed like the most moving of all of them that they've had. They did a couple different things this year. Instead of having a keynote speaker, they showed the actual film of Martin Luther King down south and the march and what transpired and all. And I think it really brought, to the, to the people that were there that were young people who really, so many years ago that it happened, that they have a limited, a limited relationship with the movement in the country at that time, that it really brought home that. And the three young people from each of the high schools who gave a speech, one was better than the other. They were all just excellent, each having a very different point to make about what the day meant to them and what the movement as a whole had done for them in their life. I'd like to lift up Debbie Maynard, who has really been the organizer. She has a committee all these years, but she's been the main organizer. And Mike Bowersack with Channel Four, who's always been the emcee and also been very supportive of the event. And I know that the city helps out as well. But thank you. And here's the program, I can just pass that around. And I encourage all of you in the future to try to make that. It's just an hour long and always very moving event. I also had an opportunity to go to Peter's retirement party. Now, we have all been missing the boat. Peter, what, he's a movie star. Now, here we have this conservative IT person. And it was fantastic. All the staff that spoke did an incredibly great job. And the people that worked for him and everything spoke. And they had it decorated like it was with one of the awards programs. Can't even think of all the...
What was it?
Premiere, yes. And they had these posters with Peter as the person that was in the movies and everything. And it was just really, but I was so disappointed that all these years I've known him and I never knew anything about this part of his life. And I might have viewed him differently had I known that, you know? Maybe that's why they didn't tell me. And the last thing was, I, I wanted to bring up what Eric Kraus brought to our attention. And I'm wondering if his presentation that he was talking about making, perhaps we could recommend that, that present, that the Community Service Committee of Council come together, the Community Development Committee, and have him do a presentation to them. And make a report to us.
Counsel?
Yep. I think that'd be a good venue to start.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tim.
Mike, I didn't have anything other than I was going to move that we adjourn into executive session for a brief discussion of personnel matters, but I can wait until I've reviewed and commented.
Let Rick go ahead. Anything?
Just have one thing. This Wednesday, January 28th, happens to be a special day for one of our council members. And Amy, I want to be the first to wish you happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. And it's especially, no, I think it's probably better that we don't, but I do appreciate...
Better for us, I know.
I appreciate the sentiment. And a wonderful gift is that I don't have a council meeting that night. So I'm very much looking forward to actually celebrating.
Not yet, anyway.
Yeah. Thank you.
The only thing I have, I echo some of Merrily's comments on the Fourth of July. I read through a lot of the comments and there, there's definitely some things we need to do there. I don't know, maybe, maybe we've gotten too big. I know the traffic's been an issue for years. It seems like we, hopefully, maybe with Paul Hammersmith in chief, can work through some kind of alternative traffic plan to get people in and out of there. And maybe we can. It's a lot of people leaving at the same time. But I know we, year in, year out, heard that, that discussion. And there's numerous other areas in there. So I would be, I really think we need to have a council meeting on that to discuss. So if staff can think about a timing or a meeting that we can do that, that'd be great. Okay? That's all I have.
One more thing, I'm sorry. Really quick. Yeah, I just wanted to call everybody's attention to the fact that the Police Department has a video out and a new mission statement and core values that I happened to watch. I don't know how I found it, maybe through social media. But it's, it's really, it's, it's really cool and it's really relevant. And I certainly appreciated everything. It sort of brings home, you know, everything that we already know about our Police Department. But it talks about their, their values as an organization. The video features several officers. And I just call everybody's attention to that and invite you to watch it because it was, it was very good. And maybe, you know, we watch it at the beginning of a council meeting or something. So I think it's really worthwhile for the community to hear about that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
I would renew my motion to move into executive session, a brief one, for the discussion of personnel matters. Is there a sec? I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ann?
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Nisi Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
And it's noteworthy, when we come back, there'll be no action taken, so we'll go right into adjournment.